The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Elise Radio Shack dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. White Pine County Commission Meeting, August 11th, 2021.
Good morning and welcome to the August 11th regular scheduled meeting of the White Pine County Commission. Would you all please stand in turnist's position? Jill, why don't you introduce today?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as is normal, take a push moment for reflection, meditation, prayer, whatever you'd like, so move aside. Is there any public comment on the phone line? Anybody on the phone? I'm not getting anybody, though. Okay, anyone in the audience with public comment? Anyone? Okay, George?
Mr. Chairman, on your agenda item 1V1, if you discuss the possible approval of a lease for permit 72731 to a gentleman, is that part of the water permit? If it is, if the lease is for an industrial use, I don't have a problem with it. Anything other than that, I do. We do not want to send a bad message out to Las Vegas, which is thirsty for water. When you've got that water dedicated for industrial or business expansion and you put it out to anything else, that's a bad message to send. On your agenda item C1, excuse me, 1C1, you consider the approval of possible hiring a county manager? Again, if you hire a county manager, two commissioners need to go. You guys are top heavy. The community was 6,000 in the city of Ely, 11,000 in the county at one time, three commissioners. Now we're down to 4,000 in the city of Ely, maybe 9,000 in the county, and you guys are so top heavy, it's embarrassing. Can you want to hire a county manager? Do your jobs or leave. Just that simple. Taxpayers fed up. Mr. Chairman, recently at the convention center, you had a hearing regarding the water pump station. There was a lack of microphones. Former director spent $1,500 apiece on two wireless microphones and yet nothing was provided for those in the audience that needed to speak. Those who wanted to listen to the concern weren't able to hear. You need to put people on that board that have a genuine concern. There was at least three members, maybe four, that attended that meeting. Not one of them got up to tell the manager, "Go get a microphone and pass it around." You didn't have a station where people could walk up to and talk and be heard by everybody. If that project is all that important, and I believe it is, then it's imperative that you put out a good front in providing information. You're getting beat up now. Mr. Chairman, at your last county commission meeting held on July 28, 2021, Don Pat presented on behalf of Silver Lion a list of concerns. I got a small package today, but it seems like you have a huge bigger package. I want that package. It was more than what I got today. I have an ongoing concern regarding the building inspector. I'm trying to repair a small four-foot-by-78-foot-long portion, 312 square feet. He told me $321. $321. Yet he's issued permits to individuals, full re-roofing, remodeling of homes, 250. The community choir didn't pay a dime. The selective enforcement's got to stop. He needs to go. That person is killing growth in this community, and you guys are helping. That needs to stop right now. I go to meetings, I'm told, "You've got a concern, come talk to us." Three minutes, and then all I hear is, "Time's up."
It is up, George. I just got the three minutes.
I want some answers from you, Mr. Chairman. Written answers. I've given you my request in writing. I mean, expect the same courtesy back.
Thank you for your time. Is there any other public comment in the building right now? Any on the phone? Anyone on the phone? Hearing none, we'll move forward with the county commission meeting on page two. It's a nine o'clock timed item. We're going to open up the fire at recess, the county commission meeting, open up the fire commission meeting, and the first item on the fire commission meeting is public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone? Anyone on the phone? I hear none. Anyone in the building?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I have an ongoing concern in regards to the interest risk of that MOB in Highway 93. I want that written report. We have a dangerous situation there, especially with emergency equipment. You can't keep ignoring the issue. I want that report, and I'll go somewhere else to address the issue, but I want it from you first. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience with public comment? And last call on the phone? Hearing none and seeing none, we'll move forward with item, page two, item A1, is discussion for possible action, the approval of the monthly financial reports for July 2021. Notice it.
Thank you, and those are in backup in their normal format, and I'm happy to answer any questions. The balance sheet, just a reminder, we're still closing down last fiscal year, so the beginning of the balance for this fiscal year will be adjusted as we record those final revenues and expenditures as they're coming in.
Anyone got any questions of Elizabeth Travis? Hearing none? I look for a motion to approve.
So who?
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passionate? Item two, discussion for possible action, the approval of budget transfers within and between functions or programs within a fund that do not increase the total appropriation of the fund or adjust for approved grant slash agency funds. Elizabeth?
Okay, and so at this time here, you're getting our final adjustments from last fiscal year and any new adjustments in the current fiscal year. There are no new adjustments in the current fiscal year. We just had a few minor adjustments to the budgets from last fiscal year. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I ask for your approval.
Any questions by the commission? Hearing none, I look for a motion to approve.
So who?
Motion by Ian.
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further question? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passionate? Item three, discussion for possible action, the approval of the permit slash letter to Garden State Fireworks for the fireworks display at the JCC Fields near McGill, Nevada, on Sunday, September 5th, 2021, around 9:00 PM, recognition of Labor Day. Michael Chow, are you there? Please come forward.
Morning.
Morning, Mike.
Do you guys have a copy of all the information? Is that built here?
And so, the JCC is just a block down the kind of... Okay. Okay. Anyone got a question of Mr. Chow? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Move to approve, it's presented.
Motion by Shane.
Second.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passionate? Notice? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work. Okay, that brings us to the end of the fire commission meeting. The last item on the fire commission meeting is public comment. Is there any public comment on the fire commission? Anyone on the phone? Anyone in the audience? Hearing none and seeing none, we will now close the fire commission meeting and reopen the county commission meeting. And on page two, item B, it's the 915, we're ahead of that game, so let's see what we're providing here. Elected officials on page two. Page three, item two, items from elected officials in department heads. Item A is Lori Carson, Natural Resources. Item one is a discussion for information only regarding White Pine County Natural Resources and public land issues tracking list. Jeremy Drew. Jeremy, hey, welcome in person today.
Good morning. I'm just a voice. Good morning, commissioners. For your record, Jeremy Drew, resource project manager of Resource Concepts. I'll try and step through this list quickly because we covered it a couple weeks ago. Just point out a couple of the key items that have popped up since then. You guys are all kind of right in the middle of what I call a bull's eye of renewable energy development. So you have the Trans Canyon Crosstie Project coming in from the east out of Utah, over Sacramento Pass and Cooper Canyon. That cooperating agency process has just kicked off. We've made a formal request, and I would anticipate BLM out of Utah sending us a formal MOU on that in the coming weeks. The other one that's coming up from the north, and this will be handled out of Elko BLM, is the SWIP North Transmission Line. D I S was actually completed on that quite some time ago, but it was before the Sage Cross R and P regulations all went into effect, and so they're going to have to do a supplemental E I S, and it could be pretty extensive. So just wanted to keep on our radar. Robinson Mine Expansion, you'll recall we commented on the draft E I S some months ago. The BLM actually released the final E I S on Friday, so there's a 30-day comment period there, and that project will move forward. If you'll recall that, some pit expansion, expansion one of the waste rock dumps, and then I think it adds four years to the mine life. White Pine Pump Storage, we've got a comment letter for the geotechnical study coming up on a future agenda item, so I won't hit that too significantly at this point. And then the other thing I would mention that's been kind of on our tracking list for a while is this BLM statewide resource management plan. State Director John Rady came to the Naco Public Land and Natural Resource Committee meeting last week and presented kind of their vision for what they're exploring, and essentially what they want to do is write one, which is going to be a sizable environmental impact statement for the entire state of Nevada, and then from that document, they would issue somewhere in the neighborhood of 18 different records of decision for each field office. There's a lot of economy of scale in that. There's also a lot of potential to miss locally specific issues. I wasn't shy about pointing that out. I also wasn't shy about pointing out that their slideshow didn't include consultation with local government. And so while I think this project is likely to move forward, I think it's also something we need to keep a close eye on, because essentially what they're trying to do is kind of take a zoning concept like you would have in urban areas and apply it to public lands. And I don't know that that works particularly well with the multiply use concept. And so just something we want to keep an eye on, they're doing their preliminary assessment now, and they want to finish by 2025, which in the coming years is like warp speed. So we'll keep an eye on that for you, but I wanted to give you some more information on how they had it. And that concludes my informational presentation, and we'll take the other two as time lapse. Happy to answer any questions.
We'll go forward while you're up there, but either you got any questions on this discussion item? This is a discussion item, so if anyone has anything else, we will move forward with item two. If that's okay with the commission, then we'll just get Jeremy out of the way here. Item two is discussion for possible action, the ratification of a letter of support of the BLM South Spring Valley and Hamlin Valley Watership Restoration Plan.
Chairman, for your record, Jeremy Drew with RCI. This was something that the POAC had recommended. The deadline was prior to this meeting, and so we submitted it to meet the deadline. Essentially, what we're saying is we support the treatments proposed for South Spring and Hamlin Valley. This is similar to the treatment PJ Treatport you see here south of town in Steptow Valley. We cited some of the public land policy plan policies that support that action, and that's about it.
Anyone got any questions from Jeremy on this letter? Okay, now, I look for a motion to approve.
So who?
Motion by Travis.
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passionate? Notice? Item three, discussion for possible action, the approval of a comment letter regarding the geotechnical study for the proposed White Pine Pump Storage project.
Chairman, I'll make my disclosure. As always, I have no complex interest in this project, and as I've shown in the past, no complex property, so I will be going on with that.
All right, Jeremy. Anybody else? Jeremy, go ahead.
For the record, Jeremy Drew with RCI. Chairman, what we've done here, there was a 15-day comment period that opened last week. Comments are actually due by this Friday, and so what we did is put together a comment letter specific to the geotechnical assessment. One thing that I would point out is we are a cooperating agency. I had a chance under confidentiality agreement to review the administrative draft and provided some comments and requests for clarification. BLM was able to make a lot of those, which was good to see, so I think their second version of the document that came out for public was good. Again, we point out three of the goals and policies that kind of relate to renewable energy development from the public land policy plan. There's not a specific section on energy, but there are scenarios that talk about it. And then we step through and make some comments specific to a variety of issues that maybe could be clarified or questions that should probably be answered specific to the geotechnical investigation. That's my overview. I'm happy to get in with the nuts and bolts for answering questions.
Anyone got any questions of Jeremy? Hearing none? I look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve is presented.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passionate? Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you, Jeremy. See all yours? Nice to see you.
Same for you.
We're going to go back now to the 915. Okay, just pass that. On page two, item B, 915 County Water Permit 72730. Item one is a discussion for possible action, the approval of a lease or sale of a portion of permit 72730 to Corey Camp, Corey Camp Commissioner, Lori Carson. I guess Corey Camp's names are twice. So Lori brought this, she's got anything to...
Yeah, this is actually the first step. As you know, our water permits, we're thrilled to death that we've been able to keep them as long as we have, but they still are at risk with the state waters engineer for non-use. Corey is looking to lease a portion, and I'm assuming it's more than a lease than it would be a sale.
Right, yes.
And permit number 72730, which is a third water permit where Pump Storage Project CAS has gone with the first two, the numbers that ended in 28 and 29. So basically, this will, if we agree with this, we still have to go through the process of the camps going through with our district attorney's office to come up with a lease, and this is to get the ball rolling, at least to put part of it to beneficial use, and then the rest of it will remain in the hands of the state water engineer. This is a restricted area for parkous water. It's not a closed basin, but it's restricted. The preferred use is industrial, so we will see, this will be agriculture. And Corey, if you want to go ahead and come up and have your say.
Morning. Yeah, this is just a process that we have to go through.
Say your name.
Corey Camp.
Thank you.
Anyway, it's going to be, I'm hoping for the recommendation of the counties to push this to the state. The state will be the final approval for this, because the state is the one that controls the water. I want just these 400-acre feet for agricultural use. I know one in the basin that's restricted, rather slower than this basin. I think that was done back in the 80s. And so they took two townships, Ely just north of McGill, six miles wide, 12 miles long, designated as a restricted basin, primary for industrial and commercial use. But I just thought, well, the water isn't in use. I was hoping that we could have an opportunity to try to lease that water to use for agriculture.
Is this going to have, you mentioned the pump storage facility. Where personally would we all want that? Is this going to be a conflict with them, or is there going to be some...
No, there's no conflict with them. I mean, the only conflict would be what water I have right there now, but I don't see an issue with them affecting my water out there, so.
A portion, I... Anyone else?
Yeah, I think, you know, agriculture's part of this community, and provides jobs and tax dollars, and, you know, the issue should be gone forward as, you know, just as good as any other use coming forward in my mind. We've been sitting on these water rights for 40 years, and we still haven't seen a drop of it pumped. These water rights are going to come into question more and more, and if we have a local businessman that can utilize this and put some of this to turn into cash dollars for White Pine County, I think it's a, definitely, definitely is in our best interest.
I would commend Corey's family for moving forward. I've worked with Corey a number of times in the past in regards to acquiring through BLM and the land sales, even he's gone through that process. So, and this is just some more proving up on some of his properties.
The only thing I would ask is that the motion that we make, that would be to approve pursuing a lease or sale of a portion of the water rights, because before we actually approve a lease or sale, first of all, we have to have these. We also need to do a public hearing, we need, and I wish we didn't have all these restrictions, but we also need a new appraisal, because the last appraisal happened too far ago than we exact. And then a resolution as well. So if we could just approve pursuing that, if that's what the commission would like to do, that way it's clear on the record.
Okay, any more comment? What you guys found, that we could do this, that is standard water, so that means I would develop it, and you could attach my water either, so if he did put that in there, so it wouldn't affect ownership one way or the other.
Okay, anyone got any more questions of this? We've heard from the DA, his recommendation on what should be included in. You'll be good with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, let's see if we can get a motion with what the DA suggested.
So I'll move to approve that we go ahead and explore a lease with Corey Camp, and he works with the VA's office to put that together for us and bring it back through the proper process.
Second then.
Motion by Travis and second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you.
Thanks, Lori.
Okay, next one is at 9:30, so I'll move forward here to define, go down to page three again, and elected officials, James Beecher, district attorney, item A, discussion for possible actions, approval during inter-agreement, an agreement with other Nevada government litigants for the purposes of allocating monies recovered from the bankruptcy cases relating to the opioid epidemic. Ross is a member.
Probably taking this. Yeah, thank you, Chairman. This is just the final approval of the dispersment from the opioid bankruptcy cases. Nothing really has changed since the last one, but they did have another meeting since the last time you guys approved, so we want to just approve the final version. And that's, that's it. If you have any specific questions, I can answer that, but it's basically what we talked about before as far as this first one goes.
Anyone got any questions of James on this? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Travis.
Second.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passionate? Notice? And over to page four, item two, under the same elective, or same category, elected officials, Commissioner Bullis. Item A is a discussion for possible action, the approval of resolution 2021-71, affirming that White Pine County will not enforce COVID-19 restrictions to individuals or businesses. Ian?
Pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Move to approve.
Motion by Travis.
Second.
I just want to state for the record that I'm good with this as long as it doesn't infringe those businesses that prefer and will put, sign each other.
Well, we're not going to enforce it when we're...
No, I know that. I know that, but it's still, it's up to, it's up to them.
Well, what I mean is, they're not going to get a hard time from anybody either.
No, and I appreciate that. It's like if you have them, that's what I'm saying. I just wanted to reaffirm their rights also.
Yeah, I can speak to that. I wrote this specifically in mind with consultation with Mr. Bullis, that we were not infringing on any businesses' individual rights to make their own decisions one way or the other. That's what this says.
Anyone else got a comment or question? That was pretty clear. If not, I'll look for, I got a motion, and I have one from you Travis, and a second from Ian. So we had a motion by Travis, a second from Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passionate? Item B. Item B is discussion for possible action, the approval to send a letter to local businesses noticing them of the resolution affirming that White Pine County will not enforce COVID-19 restrictions to individuals or businesses.
I feel like this is a very important piece of this puzzle, but we could have done better the last time we passed a resolution like this. A lot of misinformation, a lot of confusion, a lot of rumors get all over town, and nobody's quite sure what to do. I can't think of any business owner that I spoke to the last time this went around that was aware of what we had passed. And so they should, they have the right to know what we've done, and then they can make their own decision until it's decided. A lot of these guys are putting up stuff and doing things out of the fear that we're coming after them, and they need to know that's not...
I think in this letter, we do need to make clear that this is just White Pine County. This does not preclude the state from coming in with OSHA, the Gaming Control Board, that the other agencies are still, still have the ability to come in and enforce it. We just, as a county, won't be enforcing it.
Correct. You got a comment on that, James? Will you go?
No, I agree with both concepts. And I guess just for list addresses, I guess like the stimulus thing, it would probably be a good list to use, I don't know.
The same people we missed up with the money. Yeah.
Can't hear you. What'd you say?
They're saying that we would use the same list that we used to send the money out the last time, so all of the businesses on that list would get the letter.
So you're talking about county businesses, not businesses in the city of Ely?
Well, the city of Ely businesses are within the county. Within the county, and we sent, did that mailing to every business in White Pine County.
Right.
Just for the record, the list of people who received stimulus from White Pine County is not all inclusive of all businesses within the county, only those that applied and were eligible. I don't know if a state business license list might be more effective, or a combination of the two, but just so you know that, that's only going to cover those people who actually applied.
Well, what we were thinking was, I could just warn, there was some kind of notice that was sent out that they could apply.
I think I hand-delivered those to the businesses as I walked up and down, and that's the way those were given. I went through Ely, Ruth, McGill, and hand-delivered personally, every single business got a letter. And that's the way I did that. I didn't mail it, I just, I went to every business, and that's how they were notified. So we can mail it, we can do the same thing, I can, well, one of us can deliver it to the businesses whenever you'd like. I think a notification is what this is all about, to let the businesses know. And if we happen to miss somebody, we'll make it perfectly clear, give us a call, we'll get you a letter too, but I think that's fine. I think the notification's a good idea.
Well, we don't have a county business license list, so we either have to rely on state business licenses or see what I can pull from the database that we have.
Okay, anybody else got a comment or question of this? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Move to.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Ian, and a second by Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passionate? Item three, we're still a few minutes ahead, is under Travis Goonan, vice chairman. It's item A is a discussion for possible action to accept the resignation of Danielle Foley from the Act 13 Board.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, right before the last Act 13 meeting, Danielle informed that board that she, via email, that she was resigning, so it's just bringing this up to our board to accept that.
Any questions? Look for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Travis.
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passionate? I'm going to squeeze one more in here because Christie's here. And we're going to get back to work or whatever. So page four, under C, Department Heads. Item one is Christie Rosich, Aquatic Center Director. And item A is discussion for possible action, the approval for the county to pay for a new lifeguard certification training.